All right, we'll call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM November 19th, Dune City Regular City Council Meeting. Role call wise, we have Melissa out with an excused absence tonight. Everyone else is here in the council floor. So please join me in the pleasure of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Item four is consideration of the agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to believe for you guys? If not, I'll... Would like to have a motion to approve the agenda?
Certainly.
Thank you. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
In the votes, I think that was unanimous. Thank you. All right, item five is consideration of consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull an item for discussion? Otherwise, five, A through E will be approved in one motion and one vote.
I'd like to make a request.
Good.
In addition to the profit loss by class, it'd be nice to see a statement of ending account balances for any places that we keep funds. So if we could have that each time we have these reports, that would be great.
Does that make sense, Lev?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Yep.
All right, anybody want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you very good. Like a second then.
I'll say it.
Thank you, Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous. All right, that takes us to announcements and course plan.
The only thing I have is that we did receive a notice from PSU that has done a preliminary population estimate. They usually do them yearly and it looks like it's grown just a little bit to 1,478.
Where are they?
But that's just an estimate. The true one should be, but we should have it very soon.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. All right, item seven is Whitmore Academy presentation. I'm going to turn the title over to you guys, okay?
Thank you. I think we must choose what's in our overall learning. Sorry to have our back to you, but if you can't hear, be sure and let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for inviting us.
You bet.
It's really, really nice. So to start out, I'm Kate Keane and I'm board chair for now. And this is Chuck Trent. And Chuck has been an international business person. And then he came, when he retired, he came to Florence and took over the Boys and Girls Club as the director for several years. And we're very fortunate to have him on our board now. And then Jennifer Wagoner is our chief operations officer and has been employed since?
July.
July. And her skills with her MBA are very helpful at this time because it's like putting together a business from the ground up. It's a big job, so having her expertise is very helpful. We can do, Chuck's doing 200 policies and doing all the financial things for the... And I'm just doing the extra things. I have to get them. But it takes, right now, it takes everyone on our board working full time to try to be open by September of '26. And we have located finally the Rite Aid building after a big search, trying to find something with at least to start. But it just, there just wasn't anything that could accommodate the size that we needed that was available. So we have earnest money down on the Rite Aid building. And that makes everything feel very real right now. So thank you for inviting us. Just a few things to start with. Siusla Valley Charter School is the operating nonprofit organization. When we open our doors, the school will be called Whitmore Classical Academy. And that is named after longtime educator and administrator in the Siusla School District. His name was Dick Whitmore, very respected. And every place we've gone, people are just thrilled with the name because they all remember him and what he did for our community. Put a few things, a few little facts out there. We are not a religious school. Our curriculum is not religious. That would not be allowed because we are a public charter school and we will be able to receive funding per child at our school if they choose to come to our school. Then we would receive 80% of the funding that would... Normally it would be 100%, but the school district is keeping 20% for admin and other things. It's different in lots of school districts. There are 130 charter schools statewide. And not all of them are public and not all of them are classical. We are a classical education model, meaning we're going back to the basics. Reading, writing, arithmetic, curse of writing, phonics, all those things. Plus, we'll have a real emphasis on the whole child. We'll be teaching, hopefully, virtues that would be nice to have returned to kids like honesty, integrity.
Respect.
Respect, and the list goes on. So we're hoping, and then also we'll be emphasizing love for country, patriotism. We'll salute the flag every morning and kind of get back to probably the way most of us went to school. There'll be no electronic devices in the classrooms. And our mission statement is to develop students in mind and character through classical education, emphasizing virtuous living, traditional learning, and civic responsibility. So they'll learn about how to serve and give back in their community, just like all of you are. We're a nonprofit, so it's been really helpful to us as far as the fundraising part because as far as other monies, federal money and all that kind of thing, for the first three years, we're kind of mainly on our own, except once the door's open, we will get some funding per child. Our contract was signed in September of 2024 after we'd been at it for two years to try to be able to come to terms with the school district and have them be able to agree on a contract that we could both live with. Took two years. So once we got that then, then we were ready to roll. We think that instead of teaching to a test, that we'll be teaching children how to think. And then with that, they'll be able to figure out with their reading and their education, they're going to develop their own understanding of knowledge. But we're going, it's more in teaching them how to think, how to hear all the points of view and then come up with their answer. We'll do a little work with performing arts and visual arts and an emphasis on literacy, writing, and then a mastery of the English language as far as writing. And we'll teach Spanish starting in kindergarten. In fourth grade, we start Latin. And it's very helpful. You probably know for Latin because a lot of our derivatives of our words come from Latin. So we're kind of excited to see that. There's no charge to attend the school. It's open to all children. And if Jennifer can explain the watery system a little while later, we probably will have some children that are not attending school anywhere right now. They're homeschooling. And we've seen a pretty marked interest in that even though we haven't done any actual enrolling yet. We are doing, we're giving, we have an intent to enroll list, but as far as enrollment, that won't start till?
January.
January. Let me see, what else? We have approximately 100 children signed up with an intent to enroll. And that is requisiting about 70 families. And we will open K through three the first year, kindergarten through third grade. And then we'll add a grade each year till we get up to K through eight. At this time, we don't plan on doing eighth grade because... I mean beyond eighth grade because kids want the high school experience. They want to go to proms and all those things. Why are we doing this? Do you have some charts for that? Want to tell them why we're doing this? Yeah.
Should have kept one of each of these. Yeah, I can just show you and then we can get them out at the end too. Well, one of the things that's been happening in Oregon is declining success in education. And if you look at this chart, it shows Oregon at 49th out of 50. It's up on the one. This is the, there's different charts. One shows 48 out of 50, one shows 50 out of 50. But in the whole nation, our academic rate is at the bottom of the barrels. And what we're also seeing happening specifically in Oregon is as spending is increasing, which is, I'll hand this up so you can see it. But as spending is increasing, which is the top line, our reading and math scores are declining. So money is not really what the problem is at this time in our state. The state of Oregon has really put so many restrictions on what can happen in the typical public school that we know there needs to be an option for families, another option. And one thing that charter schools can do is have opportunities to do things differently. And that's what they were created to do. And when we began, it was some parents, some grandparents, and they found each other all with the same concern. They wanted to have better opportunities for their children in this community and to get out from underneath the heavy hand of the state that's happening in the typical public school, to kind of get out from underneath that. I want to read, and I don't mean to be mundane, but I think it is an important thing to understand what the law says and what the intent was in developing charter schools. And you'll kind of see why we're doing what we're doing when you hear it. So I'm going to read this briefly, and I'm sorry it's a little monotonous, but I think it's important. So this is ORS 338.015. It's the intent of this chapter that new types of schools called public charter schools be created as a legitimate avenue for parents, educators, and community members to take responsible risks to create new, innovative, and more flexible ways of teaching, excuse me, of educating children within the public school system. The Legislative Assembly seeks to create an atmosphere in Oregon's public school system where research and development of new learning opportunities are actively pursued. The provisions of this chapter should be interpreted liberally to support the goals of this section and to advance a renewed commitment by this state to the mission, goals, and diversity of public education. It is the intent that public charter schools may serve as models and catalysts for the improvement of other public schools and the public school system. The goals of public charter schools shall be to: one, increase student learning and achievement; two, increase choices of learning opportunities for students; three, better meet individual student academic needs and interests; four, build stronger working relationships among educators, parents, and other community members; five, encourage the use of different and innovative learning methods; six, provide opportunities in small learning environments for flexibility and innovation, which may be applied and proven effective to other public schools; seven, create new professional opportunities for teachers; eight, establish additional forms of accountability for schools; and nine, create innovative measurement tools. So I think that in a nutshell explains what we're planning to do in providing an opportunity for families with a public tuition-free charter school that's available for all students. So anyone that applies is eligible to be in our school. We will have a maximum cap on classroom size and number of students that we can accept. At this time, our plan is to have 18 students for each of the kindergarten classes and then 20 students for each of the classes. Beyond that, we'll be opening with two kindergarten and then two classrooms for first through third grade. So a maximum of opening at 156 students when we first start. And if the number of applications, we're not calling them application, enrollment forms, because we want everyone to know they can be enrolled other than the space. If the number of enrollment forms exceeds the number of seats that we have, we will do a public lottery process. And we'll make sure it's very public, very transparent. A lot of people will apply that that's not going to be real, but believe you me, it will be. And there will be a few people that get preference that will be brothers and sisters of students that are already enrolled. So if we draw a kindergartner and there's a second and a third grader that are in the lottery, all three will go ahead and be enrolled on the list because families like to stay together. And then students of staff and teachers are the next priority. And then there will be a priority, if it comes down to two students and one is from out of the district and one is from in Siusla School District, the in-district student would get, would receive precedent. We'll see how all that goes, but all that will be clearly defined so families understand how that works and will again be very transparent. We would love to have a lottery because that means there's a whole lot of interest and then we can build from that. So we're really excited to have those enrollment forms available in January. We are currently, put our first kind of outreach forward to hire teachers. We are putting together our benefit packages, so we weren't able to quite yet put together. We're working with a consultant on that part that's worked with a lot of charter schools. But we have begun to put word out that we're looking for teachers and we've already had tremendous response from outside the area and from inside the area. 50% of our teachers need to be certified, 50% do not need to be certified. However, we will be hiring for capable classroom instruction. The 50% that are not regularly certified can certify with the Charter School Commission for the state of Oregon and it's a process they go through. And of course, everyone will have the background checks and all the things that are required in public schools. So that's an exciting next step, as well as things like teacher handbooks, family handbooks. But a big part of our time right now has been spent in preparation for opening our doors of the physical building. And I think that leads us to Chuck. And then we can come back, clean up with more questions and more information that ties into the building.
So my name is Chuck Trent and I'm the board treasurer. I'm also a Dune City resident and I have kids and great-grandkids that are attending public school right now. So this is near and dear to my heart. I spent eight years with the Boys and Girls Club and I know you well. And what I saw, and this is a real passion for me, is that only about 40% at the teen center, 40% of the teens were at grade level to be able to read. So we had six, seventh, and eighth graders coming into the Boys and Girls Club that were about third grade level. Math was worse. And so during COVID, we had 185 kids at the Boys and Girls Club and I saw all that was going on with that. And I can tell you from personal experience and observation that parents need a choice and that's what we're here to do. My background is governance, so I spent 35 years in technology. And most of that was in operations. I ran global services for a little company called Cisco Systems. So if you know routers or anything like that, so my group ran all of that worldwide. So that's my background, is really business. And like you, I pay attention to every single dollar that we spend. So balance sheets, P&Ls, and reconciliation reports is where I live. And because we only get 80% of what the school district gets per child, we have to really run lean and mean. That means our organizational structure has to have no fat in between there. That means that our board will be a working board to some extent, not like it is today, from 6:30, these guys, I'm on, they're at 6:30 in the morning till about 8 o'clock at night.
And there might be 4:00 AM, you know.
Well, once in a while.
Or maybe three.
Last week.
Yeah.
But when you're starting that school from the ground up, it is a daunting task. And as Kay mentioned, there's about 200 policies, everything from governance, instruction, staffing, curriculum, on and on and on. So we've got all but five of those done. And so we're well ahead of our schedule on that. And we use Oregon School Board Association, which is the same organization that does the policies for the school districts as well. And so that way, we make sure that we're in compliance with all the state and federal law. And that's something, again, we have to pay really, really close attention to. So the building that we're talking about, the old Rite Aid building, which will become the Whitmore Classical Academy, we're in escrow right now. We're purchasing the building for $2,020,000. And we expect that loan will close probably sometime in December. Then we also, if you recall the Rite Aid building, if you've been in there, so big square, shelves everywhere. So they left the shelving, so we've been getting rid of all the shelving.
Selling.
Yes. Revenue.
Revenue.
So once the loan closes, which we anticipate will be in December, we have already done a contract with Girding Builders out of Corvallis and also with Forward Architecture, which is out of Salem. We went through the Oregon procurement process. Have you guys done that? It is painful. It is really painful. But we went through that. And one of the things that we really wanted to make sure in that contract process is that local subcontractors were given an opportunity to bid on everything. And so we're anticipating, in fact, we're meeting with the architect and the builder next week with some of the subcontractors. And we really want to emphasize local wherever possible. And obviously, again, being the treasurer, we're going to pay really, really close attention to the cost, building materials as well. And it will be a prevailing wage and that's part of the Oregon procurement. So this build out for the K through three, and actually, we're going to go K through five. So although we're going to open the school with K through three, we're going to go ahead and build out classrooms for four and five because it's much more efficient and the least amount of cost by doing it all at one shot rather than doing K through three, waiting till the summer, then trying to do everything else in one summer. And that means all the contractors and subcontractors have to come back. That just is an efficient way, not a costly way, to be able to do that. So we're going to do K through five classrooms. We'll have a special education area that we're calling the Learning Center. I have a special needs child and so having been a parent that runs through that, it's something that we really need to pay close attention to. And we need to integrate our special ed students in any way that we can. And that's really critical, I think, to our success. We'll also have a nurses station. We'll have a general assembly area. We'll have a playground that'll be on the south side of the building. So the first phase, which is all those things that I just described, is going to be about $2.3 million for phase one. And we're anticipating construction start in January, completion in mid-July. Then there's a second phase that we're going to have to do a capital campaign. And the second phase is really the exterior improvements. It'll be signage and additional windows into the building. And the big thing in phase two will be a covered playground area. So the structural component of that, it's about 476,000. Overall, all those changes for phase two is about 1.8 million. So we're in this for almost $4 million. And so that will get us through K through five. So with our plans to go sixth, seventh, and eighth as well, so we have the option to be able to build onto the existing building. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, being a brick building. And again, adding on to an older building can be really, really costly. I think we're better served, and we've got time to look at this. This will get us through fifth grade, which will be the first four years. Then we'll look at potentially leasing another space. It could be a much smaller space because we only have sixth, seventh, and eighth. And the other thing it is that I think works well is because the middle school kids like to have their home place. And so by having a separate lease facility that has all the things that we still need, I think that really works out well for us. So that's kind of the process of what we're going to be doing over the next several months. And again, the plan is that we'll open in September of 2026. So we still got a lot of work ahead of us, but right now, we're right on track. In fact, we're a little bit ahead of where we need to be and so we're proud of that. One thing that I want to mention, when Kay was talking about classical education, we went to take a look at a school in Idaho that is a classical charter school. And when we went into the classrooms, what was really amazing is to watch the interaction with the teacher and with the students. And when the teacher would ask a question regarding their assignment, so the child would answer, but it went further than what the answer was. So then it was, well, tell me how you got to that? What was your thinking on that? And then the whole classroom chimed in on that as well. So that collaboration and what really impresses me about the classical model, again, it's not, it's not learning to take a test. It's learning for core understanding. So when you have a problem, you know how to get to the answer, but you know why you got to the answer. And even when the answer was wrong in classroom by that particular student, the teacher let that student go ahead and explain, you know, what their thought process was. And then it was a collaboration with other students to get to the right answer. And the other thing, again, talking about special education that I thought was really impressive as, again, a parent that's gone through this. So they didn't pull the special education students out of the classroom. They were part of the classroom. They had individual instruction that was going on at the same time within that structure. But man, I'll tell you, these kids are just not getting out of the park. Our kids could not get out of the park as well. I've seen what our kids could do because again, I had, you know, 185 of them during COVID. And they're plenty smart, but they need a different model. And that's what the charter school is really aiming at, is provide an opportunity for kids in a different model, provide parents with a choice. And Whitmore will be the answer for every student. That's just a reality. Some students will be better served by the school district and that's a good thing. Because what we care about, and I think we all care about in this room, what is the best way to get the right kind of education to our kids and our great-grandkids as well so that they're productive citizens that can make a living wage and contribute to society? That's really what we're after.
You probably have questions. We could go on and on. We're kind of...
We do have some, I made three copies of our packet of renderings. Might be fun for you to be able to take a look at. You might even have questions from that. We have, I just want to add in one last thing, and that is that how much we've raised.
Yeah.
Because I think our, the amount of money that we've raised is just indicative of the level of support that we have in our community. So we've raised over a million?
1.2.
Yeah, 1.14. And that's been really in the last five months.
Yeah.
Right.
So what that really shows is that we absolutely do have the support of the community.
Very good. Any questions from the council? Just start down there.
I like, there's a nice write-up from today's Iceland news for some of your renderings. So that was very nice. You know, as a parent and a grandparent, I have understood the challenges that my adult children have had and they made the choice to enroll their children into charter schools. So I think it's a choice that parents should be considering. And you have to start someplace. What I noticed is that if I post a job opening in my business, I could get 30 resumes or applications in a week. And a surprising number of those don't have good English language and writing skills. And so it's no wonder that that doesn't carry over from one generation to the next.
Right.
So we have to start someplace in helping raise the bar so that people can effectively present themselves for better jobs and opportunities. So I salute you. I think you're heading in the right direction and I wish that campus were a little larger.
Would you do?
You look around, you know, I own pickleball club. I've been looking all over town for big roomy areas that you, where you could play indoor pickleball. And there are very few options. And there are very few options in our community presently, you know, the way that it works. But from your renderings, it looks like it's very doable. And I was thinking about your lottery. You know, I know that that is a very sensitive and maybe political situation, but I know that, for example, a professional-level position in our community, whether it's healthcare, or banking, finance, something like that, it's going to be attractive to those applicants if there's a charter school in town.
That's right.
It would be nice if they had a preference option to get their children enrolled. So, I can hear a nurse or physician saying, "I'd love to come to Florence, but I really need my kids to be in a charter school." They're already in a charter school. I want them to go to a charter school. But then, of course, that kind of breeds elitism. And that's very sensitive.
It's very sensitive, yeah.
So, on the one hand, I hope you have a lottery. On the other hand, I hope you don't.
I hope.
But I think it brings another aspect to our community. And parents want to be able to choose a path for their children. And I know people who have left the community. And I know parents who are homeschooling their kids right now because they feel like they don't have that choice. And I'm not sure those parents are always well-prepared to do homeschooling.
Right.
It's very difficult.
Yeah.
It's very challenging. So, I salute your efforts, and I think that, you know, these three people are dinosaurs right here.
Don't get in their way!
Irresparable, eh?
Yeah, we trip over each other, don't we? The other thing is, we do know, as you mentioned, we do know physicians and other professionals that came, they interviewed, and then they left because of the schools. And we know people that lived here as teachers, or are not as teachers, as physicians, or nurses, or radiologists, or whatever. And they left because when their children got a certain age, because they didn't know that their needs of their children were being met. So, I think it will help our community in a lot of ways. I think once we're open, then I think everything will... And like Chuck says, it's not going to be for every child, because it'll raise the bar. The other thing that I think is important to, and I've heard moms say this, they're concerned their child won't be able to be involved in sports. All of our children can do any of the other sports in the district, so it's reciprocal. If we have said, if we're bringing in an artist or a musician, and we have extra room, or we're going to go to the Holt Center, we have extra room on the bus, we'll invite people from the other school to join us, you know, until we're full. So, I think as trust grows, and they don't see us as a threat, I think we'll be having more of those opportunities. But I do also think competition's healthy. That's how things work. So, anyway, we don't want to take your whole evening.
No, thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, Chris?
Uh, two questions. The said no electronics in the classroom. Can you elaborate on that?
Students won't have their cellphones in the classroom. They'll be turned off into their backpacks, and their backpacks will be in the hall. Yeah. And then teachers will use smartboards and iPads for teaching only, but not on their... Correct, correct. And then we, oh, also, I want to add, there will be a card of computers. We're not sure exactly how that'll work, because they will learn basic keyboarding skills, because of the state testing that they're required to do, they have to do it on a computer. So, we're not going to be just...
Yeah, some level of technical attitude is important.
Yes.
Yeah, being from Cisco, I definitely wouldn't...
And then on your chart here, I can definitely tell that you're trying to tell a story with these statistics, but it's disconcerting to see you cherry pick math eighth grade and reading fourth grade to prove your point. Like, there's a lot of other statistics, and you're obviously choosing those two to tell your story.
Yeah, that was a Georgetown study that they did in every state. So, it was meant to show the difference in, you know, the answer wasn't just more dollars, and so...
I know.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
But that tells an incomplete story.
Okay.
When people use statistics to tell their story versus the truth, it's frustrating.
Yeah, okay.
Luckily, those came from Georgetown. Not from us.
But you chose to use them.
Pardon?
But you chose to use them.
Yes, that's right. You're right.
I don't agree with you.
Nope. All right, I'm good. I think it's awesome.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's not a question. First of all, I'd say congratulations. Thank you very much. I know this is taking you guys a lot of work. This has been tried before you guys, and it failed. But you're the right group, and you're making it happen. What I'm excited for, the children that are going to be under your supervision, and for the young parents who are going to have that option, because they need it in this town real bad. Whether they're cherry picking or not, I've lived here my whole life. I've watched the, I don't know the right word, the degradation, the downfall of Cyusla High School education. I'm sorry to say that, but it's the truth. It's just not, Florence is where Oregon is as a whole in the nation. It's embarrassing.
Yeah.
I'm going to go off here just a little bit. We legalized marijuana here, and the whole sales for that was for roads, for education, monies for that. They legalized gambling. They said that was going to be for roads, for education, for the children. It's not. It's going to the homeless. A whole big portion of it's going to EBT cards all over. One of the fastest-growing populations of homeless in the United States is coming into Oregon. And we're letting our schools go. We just heard a pitch for a new school here. You take the money that's going to marijuana and to gambling, and you could build a new school for every school in Oregon, and you could have charter schools paid for. Yeah, I better shut up and get out there. Thank you guys so much for your hard work.
Thank you for letting us share, and it's very nice that you contacted us.
Before we wrap up, eight questions from the audience.
Well, obviously, you've studied this at great length. What do you think the major issues are? Why do you think public schools are failing? Because my sister and I both lived in this area all our life, and attended public school in Cyusla. We both went on to college and beyond, and did well for ourselves. Why is there such a problem now? I've been hearing this from other people in the area, but why do you think?
I, my children attended here, and I taught in the public school. And I just, I'm not sure where we got off track. And it's not just, it's not just Cyusla. I mean, there's a lot of schools in Oregon. It might be that we're just not sticking to the basics, and also, I think our requirements have gone way down. Our graduation requirements have gone way down, and what you don't expect. Children do what you expect them to do. If you think they can do it, and you can show them how to get there, they can do it. But I think we've just gotten, we've just gotten off track. That's a, and I agree. We used to have wonderful schools.
I do feel like I haven't been educated here.
That's true.
I felt like we had good system, and I just wonder what happened. You know, it's very sad.
The emphasis has gone.
I can give you a prime example. My daughter, when we moved here, she was a year and a half to two years ahead in all the scholastics at the school that she was going to in a larger city. And then when she came here, she was, all of a sudden, within a year, she fell back and fell right in line with where they were at. She was already two years ahead. So, it's, I mean, it's pretty evident, and that was 11 years ago. So, I mean, this has been going on for a long time, and so, thank you.
What's really interesting, I work with the Rotary Club and the Interact Group, and we review scholarship applications from youth for some of the scholarships that we give in the community. And there are lots of students in the Cyusla School District who are stellar. Lots of them.
That's right.
But the common ingredient there is that their parents are very, very engaged, very engaged. And so, these kids, you know, not only have great mentorship and great parents, they are finding out early in the game, "This is what I need to do to prepare to go to university or college. I don't have to pick my life path yet, but this is where I need to be." These are kind of like the gateposts along the way. And a lot of our kids and a lot of our parents don't have that vision. They don't. They don't have that.
Right.
So, it's kind of a mixed bag. So, I think there's a group that's really doing well, but it's a very small group compared to the entire population.
I just want to make one comment on that. That is one of the things we learned at the Treasure Valley School that we visited. We said, "How do you work with parents?" They said, "They're always welcome." They're encouraged to come in, and it's a constant feedback loop, not about how we're teaching, but how their kids are doing and how they can support it at home. And we do a lot of parent education. And so, that's really going to be our model, too, is just really bringing those parents, like we talked about pressing in with the special needs kids. We're also going to kind of press in with the parents and see where we can help educate parents and come alongside them, and really encourage them to be part of the process. So, we're really looking forward to doing that. And just having good expectations over everyone and believing everybody can do it. I think when we lower those expectations, then we help. Kids really think we don't believe in them. So, same with parents. I think you can have high expectations of parents, but also come alongside them and give them the tools that they need.
Yeah, I think the other thing to add on to that, too, is that we have to have an after-school program that offers tutoring as well, because I saw that at the Boys and Girls Club, is that, to the point that you made, was very spot-on. There are a group of parents that are really engaged, and they work with their kids, and they can help their kids with their homework. There's a lot of parents in our community that can't. Sometimes it's because they're working three times, three jobs. Sometimes it's because they just don't have the skill set. So, that's where I think we have to have an after-school program that includes tutoring and mentoring, that help the kids that just don't have anywhere else to go when they're struggling. There is an answer to that.
I have one more question. Have you looked at year-round school?
We really haven't, because right now, we're trying to get these doors open. We have not yet explored it, but we are very open to different ways of doing things. So, it certainly could be something we look into.
Well, I know that where facilities are hard to come by, and the demand is high. I have some of my grandchildren that participate in a year-round calendar. And it, there's, of course, a lot of pushback, because it messes up summer vacations or some. But, you know, it's a graduated program to having access to resources that are used twelve months out of the year instead of taking the summer off, so...
And I mean, remiss. I feel badly when I got out of the car. So, even though we've raised a million dollars, we, the first, this year especially, but the first three years are really challenging for charter schools. We'll have the 80% per child, but we won't have all the federal monies and all the other monies that school districts have. So, you have to have a three-year history financially. Pretty much, you apply for a lot of grants. So, anybody that would like to contribute, since we're a nonprofit, you just let me know. And I'll be happy to meet with any of you, and it will be well-spent. It will be well-spent.
And we are very open to any questions anybody has. We've, even people that have had concerns on Facebook, we've sent some private messages and said, "We'd love to sit down and visit you, with you," and we've had some people take us up on it, and it's been a welcome opportunity. So, we're really transparent. We really want to let it all hang out. We had one particular person, it's just an interesting story, because she was consistently concerned on social media. And, you know, you can't get on there and answer each person, and yet, it kept being a constant drumbeat. And so, she came to our town hall meeting that we had, and she submitted 10 questions. Everyone else, you know, had their one question, but we answered her 10 questions. And then she still had concerns, in particular, about our curriculum. And so, we followed up with her. She came to our office and sat down and looked at our curriculum for an hour and was okay with it all. And that's kind of been, for now, as far as that's gone. But we are very willing to do all those things. So, even, or if there's another group that you're part of, any of you, that you would like us to come to that group, or we can put together a group, whatever you need us to do, we're available to answer questions.
I promised Ed we wouldn't stay here.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
That takes us to the second most exciting thing on the agenda, the mayor report. I'm kidding. So, real quick, we've got, with Elcod, we put together a GIF layer. We showed that earlier. It's, we've got a lot of stuff populated now. I believe we have all the parcel, we now have a coverage for all vacant parcels, so we're kind of forecasting what's buildable. You know, what are the vacant parcels that are buildable? If you own a vacant lot, you should have gotten a letter that says, "Do you want water reservation?" We are just about finished with everything we can do with city water rights and permitting. So, if there's a vacant lot that wants to sign up for a reservation, we're going to put all those on the map, and then our next step, when this fourth and hopefully final permit extension are approved, will be beneficial use for all the city water rights and get those all papered and be done with that. But once that step is done, you have permanent water right for any of those lots that are on city, that have city reservations. So, big step, and then mapping them all. So, we have, there's been letters going out. I got one because I have a well. So, I have a well tag and a well number, and so, the city's trying to just keep track on a big database. So, there's somebody says, you know, "Is the property, and is there improvements? Do they have city water right, their own state water right? Do they have a well?" And basically, all that stuff is just about being gathered in that. And I talk about it, but lie the best of us, so, thank you. And then we have a holiday party coming up, December 6th, in this very room at 11:00 AM. There will be games, turkey, and drinks provided, and it is a potluck. So, we're looking for side dishes and desserts. Food at 1:00, games start at 11:00, so desserts, what have you. And this was in the November newsletter, right? And it'll be in the December newsletter, and then we'll put it on the neighborhood Facebook page and tell anybody else in the area.
At the post office.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. So, that's all I have. We have code enforcement information and permits in front of you. Does anybody have any questions on either one of those? We've got staff here tonight. Anyone?
I had one question. I just have to find it.
Okay.
There were seven of something. What was that? Do you remember these words?
Not total business license noncompliance. It's seven.
Yeah. That's if I drive around and I see a contractor working, and he's not already pre-approved or has a current, you know, permit to work in Doom City, I'll stop him and I'll give him the application.
Perfect. Excellent. I like it. So, business licenses are landscapers, tree trimmers, and licensed contractors. So, if he hears a saw, smells paint...
Not really. I just drive around. If I see, you know, a company I'm not aware of, I'll check my sheet. If they're not on the sheet, I'll go talk to them. And if they said they're not aware, I give them the information. I give them the application. And a lot of them are from out of town, so if they don't know there's rules for Doom City.
Yeah.
So, a lot of them are agreeable when they get back, and they do it. Some, you gotta twist their arm a little bit.
Gentle.
Carefully.
Yes.
Any other questions? If not, that's my opinion. Few business. First item is appoint or reappoint Gail Nicholas to the planning commission. I serve with Gail. She is a wonderful planning commissioner.
She is.
We have the chair of the planning commission here. If anyone has any questions, but, yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to appoint her to the planning commission.
Okay. I would second that.
Okay. You second it, babe?
I'll second it. Call in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. B, short-term rental, monthly payment?
Yes. So... We do have some that come from the, like, property management company. So, like La Casa, and we have a local company. So, those are easy to get our payments, the 5% each month.
Right.
It tends to be a struggle when they are individual property owners. So, the question is, you know, we basically said 5%, and it was kind of on an armor system. The question is whether or not you wanted to try to get some kind of documentation at the end of the year of how much they have rented their home, and to make sure that Doom City is actually getting that 5%.
Yeah. So, we, Madeline and I talked, we were like, "There's a renewal?"
Yeah. Yeah.
Make a show last year's, get a renewal for next year. If somebody's paid for the, the license or the permit or whatever you wanna call that, they paid all the fees and then they say, well, we actually only rented two days last year. It doesn't jive, it doesn't make any sense. You're gonna go through all that and pay the fees. So if they haven't paid monthly, we'll ask for an annual summary. And, and I don't think we need to take any action to do that because it's in the ordinance that it's five percent. I mean, at the end of the day, it's up to them to show the business receipt. So we just wanna have that discussion because not everybody's, not everybody does it the same way.
No.
So, um, and we have, and the other challenge is, we were relying on the state to say, here's what we collected and so here's your share, so you would know, and the state struggles too. The state says their stuff is confidential, which doesn't make any sense. But we are sending them all of our addresses to say, well, here's the ones that have a permit, so. And they've admitted they don't always jive. Um, they may have somebody we don't have, more likely we have somebody that's not paying state taxes either. So uh, between the two, we're trying to, we're trying to line that up and make sure it's covered properly, so.
Well, uh, I do know that there's a huge problem with Airbnb and the reason I know this is because we, we had the company, we had the, yeah, we've had the issue where um, they're supposed to be collecting X percent tax.
Right.
And they're supposed to be doing that um, on behalf of the individual that they're representing.
Right, where you click the rental and it adds all that.
They, they collect all that prior to you getting your payment. Well, uh, they're not collecting the proper tax base. And we, we made them aware of this and they, they almost, they've refused to even correct it. So Airbnb is not submitting and it's actually lower what they're, uh, they're collecting.
Is that the one that told us they wouldn't collect Airbnb? Was it Airbnb or?
No.
One of them said they wouldn't collect.
La Casa because.
Oh, yeah.
Because it was a tax.
Right, they said it was a tax, we said, no, it's a city.
So, but they only have four rentals that they manage.
Okay.
And each one of those individuals pays themselves and they are.
So those are okay, alright.
But doesn't, La Casa tells them how much they're supposed to give us, is that correct?
Rich, do you think?
They wait till they get their monthly statement from La Casa and then they pay us.
Gotcha, perfect.
Rich, do you think Verbo has the same problem?
What's that?
Do you think Verbo has the same problem as Airbnb?
Yeah, you didn't, you've never used, I've never used the app, man.
We do, but they do take out more taxes than Airbnb.
I like their fee too.
They said they take out more.
So I think there's gonna be a discrepancy no matter what way you look at it because Airbnb is paying the state or the county or whatever X amount and they're going off with the county states where it's actually more than what there's, they're supposed to be collecting more.
I mean, the county basically told me they, they can't tell us, so.
Well, the real issue here is the people who are hammering it themselves. That's what she's bringing forward here and it looks like.
Well, any of them, I mean, we're just gonna check on it.
The mayor's saying, give us your paperwork before we renew.
We'll just prove it up and then, then the renewal.
If it doesn't look, say, well, Eric, we don't understand why you're even in business.
Yeah.
Well, YouTube print it off, I mean.
But Airbnb gets a mistake, so.
Yeah, the, the rental sites do, yeah. And then we have, but then we've got the ones that do it themselves and so it may be harder to track. And I'm not saying they're all cheating, it's just, it's inconsistent, right? They're not all paying monthly, which is the way we said.
I think a lot of them are cheating that are being honest.
Probably.
In my opinion.
Yeah. Uh, but I, I don't have enormous faith in the way the state's doing it, you know, they're honest. Their number and our number are the same, so it should be really easy to verify to pay this much in state tax and have the same consistency.
Well, I, I rented an Airbnb in another area and then the owner of the property told me, if you ever wanna come back, just let me know and we can do a cash deal.
Right, of, of the grid, right, you save everything.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm afraid it happens. Alright, uh, next item C is an introduction. We've got a letter from Lane County. Uh, they're gonna update their plan by twenty twenty-eight. The current plan expires in twenty twenty-eight. The old data, the, the chapter for Doom City is in here for reference. Uh, we don't need to correct anything tonight. I think we had some concerns, you know, we flipped through it and said, what do we have to do to update it? They said, right now, don't update it. We're gonna send somebody out to watch through what we need. Um, the current plan had three employees listed in it. And um, only one of them is still here, Pam. So we were thinking maybe the third, uh, they want one primary, which will be applied up. And I would like to get a volunteer from the council for the third um, to sit in at the time of planning. And they said, this will start early twenty-six, the planning, and uh, work through all the details in twenty-seven, so it's adopted by twenty-eight. And so our chapter will be updated and the Lane County plan will be updated at the end of that period, so. So Susan's excited, you wanna volunteer?
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Alright, perfect, then. I think that's really our action tonight, it's not much of an action because we just, we, they gave us a deadline like last week and we're like, oh, well, the council doesn't meet till next week. So we basically said, yes, we're interested and we're uh, ratifying staff action, if you will. You know, Lyle and I talked and I said, well, we gotta tell them, yes, we gotta say yes to participate. Um, we're not obligated to buy any equipment or do any different, just to update the plan and they will send a planner out here to help us.
When do you plan to update your plan?
It's their schedule.
Oh, it's not your schedule, it's their schedule?
Exactly, and last time they had two meetings at Florence Event Center and two meetings at City Hall. So they will come to us, I think, and, and, you know, either walk, brief council or at least walk our, you know, our team members, Susan will be invited. And then last time they had a public meeting at Florence Event Center to say, this is the all-hazard plan for Lane County and they took comments from the community.
Do you think, Eric, is Doom City's priority the same as Lane County's priorities?
No, they don't have to be. We rank and rate our own concerns, uh, and they had a, you know, they had a list to work off of. So they're gonna walk us through all that stuff again and um, uh, you know, we'll decide if those priorities have changed or if they make sense, so.
They didn't make sense.
So tonight it's just to say, it's gonna start in twenty-six. And Susan will, we'll add Susan to the list, alright.
I think so.
Oh yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Would you want to consider perhaps having a member of the planning commission involved as well?
Um, we'll consider that. So last time we had three staff and because we haven't met with the county, they just said, just tell us you want to participate and then we're gonna schedule somebody to come out, but yes, if that, if we get to that point, it's appropriate, yes.
Yeah, because these plans have come through uh, over the years, I've seen them and uh, there's always a section that says, met with planning commission, certain subjects after doing. The planning commission never has seats.
Well, I was gonna say, if this one doesn't say that, I wonder, because the comprehensive plan and the land use plan, I'll have to go to the planning commission, I was like, so anyway, this is formative stages, but yes.
Just throw them out there.
No, I appreciate it. Uh, the answer's yes, that'll, it'll go wherever it needs to go. And I noticed that they came, the staff had two dates they met and it said with city council, but I don't think they met with city council, I think they met with city staff and none of them said, we met with planning commission.
Yep.
So if they're gonna make the trip, we'll probably have one of them as a briefing with the planning commission and then another one either with staff or the recommendation to council, however that works out. Um, so yeah, we'll, I think we'll manage that a little different. So I appreciate the comment. So I don't think we really need any action other than, you know, we're all good going forward. We'll have something more formal in the future. And then item D is flock cameras. Uh, they've been in the press lately, there was a bad guy that got out of jail um, in Portland and ended up arrested in Florence and they saw him on the camera, there was some facial recognition or something, he was by seven eleven. Florence, I believe, got a grant, got some flock cameras. Um, is it Woodburn was just in the news? Woodburn has them and decided to turn them off because ICE, they think ICE is, ICE is looking for bad guys, so the town said they're gonna shut them off.
There's illegal people here.
And if you take government money and you turn them off, you gotta give the government money back and I, so. So this was a question because it came up, you know. Not the question, do you wanna do it really, is do we even go looking? Because we get these questions all the time, like you guys.
Is flock what they're called or is this an acronym or something or is it standard for something? We don't have any where they flock.
I've never heard of this before.
Yeah, and that's part two, is they're generally like busy intersections and business districts and the busiest road in Doom City is a county road, so it would be the county's call. Yeah, it'd be Canary and, and Clear Lake, so.
So flock is the name of the company that.
Yes, and they are a government supplier and they, you know, they, they've got some background software and then all the law enforcement can subscribe to it and run their algorithms and look for bad guys and.
The truth is, we don't, we don't have a place to put it that's gonna be productive. Uh, because the highway doesn't belong to us.
No. Clear Lake doesn't belong, it was Canary that split them.
They're not gonna, they're not gonna put it on the road like Clear Lake. There's just not enough traffic.
Well, and Clear Lake's the county's.
Right.
So we can put on cloud nine.
Mad Pete, you got lots of traffic over there.
Pacific's the county road, so we'll put it as a turn off of Pacific, but we can't put it in the Lane County park either.
The other one is foothill, that intersection.
That's kinda where I figured, but we wanted to bring it up just in case anybody was. I mean, it's, in theory it's used for uh, law and order, but in practice it comes with a lot of, you know, stigma sometimes and there's a cost. I mean, and we don't have any money, we, if everybody said, yeah, we should do it, all the cool kids are doing it, we'd go looking for money, but as of right now, we'll just.
You could put it on foothill and face it towards a stop sign that nobody stops at. And see all the people that.
And see if the highway patrol's interested.
See if the boats, the boats that don't stop, the sheriffs.
So sheriff sat at the parking lot all week long and he didn't get that one ticket, Susan, come on.
He just sat there and talked to the boat or something.
I wanted it at my house and at Duke's house.
Well, and even at my house, I lose half my family.
Alright, we won't take any action on that either. Alright, thank you, and full business. We still don't have everybody in a blue shirt picture, but we have everybody but Chris, so. Yeah, I used that picture, so.
Photoshop.
You can, you can do that.
So we can do Photoshop and we're good. I also wasn't standing up very straight when I took the picture.
That's your problem.
Yeah, it is.
I'll send you the picture first.
Alright, and it made me look like I'm standing up straight. Okay, I think we have all we need for that. Um, item B is chat trail. Um, we kinda got, we got started, we had some good discussion, we had some public input, if you will, or neighborhood input. Um, I've got a new neighbor who retired from Parks and Rec Department, he's built a lot of trails, he's happy to help. Um, so we decided, we've notified a couple of private property owners and said, you know, I mean, we have a right to swim through the court some years ago, we have a right. Uh, and it's not really restrictive, it basically says wherever it was historically, so we're gonna rely on some, some memories and people that used to walk in the area. And um, uh, we just need to figure out what's the next step forward. Um, you know, Rich was the champion, but I don't want you. Number one, I think you should be free to be a councilman, so when it comes back to us for some sort of approval, you can approve it and not.
I, I am game for anybody that, I, I really haven't had the time to, to. I went and researched it a little bit, but the, the one thing that I, I wanna make very clear is property owner back there has put up great big signs that say basically, get the hell out.
Right.
And since we went and walked through there and I'm guessing maybe a letter was sent.
Yep.
We need to resend the letter with the court documentation, the states.
They have it.
Yeah.
Well, and, and they need to know that we're gonna go through there and put that in.
Isn't it brushy, I haven't been over through there in a year.
I mean, it's, uh, you, you can get through there and um, I, I think, well.
Well, I think you should say another thing, but just let them know that we're gonna be moving forward on this. Maybe just do what I call a little pioneer work on it and go through it with a chainsaw, make some bracket noise back there, clear some brush and, and that we have ownership ability to do it.
Go walk it and, and put some lath and red flags or something and say, this is where we're.
This is where it's gonna be or something, yeah.
Before we really localize.
But is it a recreational hiking trail?
Yeah, this would be just, this is the old connection, went Westlake to Northlake basically and um, uh, and in theory you could shortcut over there without getting out on the highway if you wanted to. And it used to be, I mean, it used to be the path, school kids and everybody else used it, so. Alan?
I think you ought to meet with every property owner that touches that trail. Everybody else that doesn't have a trail going through their property has a different view. If the trail was going next to your property, you would think differently. So if it's never been there and hasn't been there since the nineteen seventies, you should meet with each of them and tell them what you want, because they're the only ones that'll be impacted. If the trail was going next to your property in cloud nine, Larry, you'd think differently, Chris, you'd think differently. If the trail goes next to your house, you would think differently. So you ought to take their look, talk to them, tell them what you wanna do. If the trail ran right through your backyard, you wouldn't like it.
Well, I, I agree with Alan, but I think we don't have to meet with them, we need to give them the opportunity to meet with us.
Well, you gotta let them know what to do and talk to them. They're the only ones that are gonna be impacted, the only ones that are gonna have a negative view. So you take this minority that doesn't want it. The ninety-nine percent of Doom City wants it, but the ones impacted don't.
Well, yeah, I think you're gonna have that, but this has been going on for years and talking about this for forever.
Yeah.
But the trail hasn't been there since the nineteen sixties. They bought the property without the trail.
Well, there was no intent for the trail trail was there. Before they bought the property, the trail was there.
They would have been in their title search.
Yeah. It may not have been used, I never walked in.
How long ago was that in court case?
But it's, it hasn't been, it hasn't been there in fifty years.
Was that in seventy?
Yeah, it's been a long time, but it's been there still.
That trail was actually active when we first moved here. And eleven years ago, there was people that used that trail on a regular basis. And we walked that trail when we first moved here many times, but um, or what we believed was the trail.
It just hasn't been maintained.
And so, I mean, it's not like it hasn't been used, it's probably not used.
It's rare, rarely, rarely, rarely.
Well, it's also posted now, inappropriately. I won't say illegally, but yeah, uh, if you look at Google Maps, it shows the trail. I rode my bike down there and it says, dead end road or keep out, it's a public street.
You can't have that kind of signage on where public can go, that's gotta go. It's definitely got a public right away, but they're the only ones that are impacted, you haven't really talked to them. If it was going by your property, you wouldn't like it either.
Well, it goes across my property.
We have a different viewpoint.
Well, I think, I think if we just have, send a letter to the affected property owners and communicate to them that we're moving forward.
Right now, there's two we have crossed.
Right.
And they've been notified twice.
And we have.
Okay.
And, and it's just basically, they just wanna know any updates that we have and we just haven't had any updates. That's kinda why it's on here is because they, they've asked if there's been any updates.
So to his point, just send him a letter saying we're gonna be doing some pioneering? They have a question.
At least have the signage removed and some signage put up that it's a public right away. So people can go through there and not be intimidated by signage.
Full gas access, right?
Future improvements?
Yeah.
For the chat trail, something like that?
For a footpath, yeah, it was, that was basically the court finding, was there's historic, historic footpath and the public has a right to it. And so part of it's not very well described, it's, you know, you get from point A to point B. And um, so, and that's part of our challenge, it doesn't have a, a hard description with the, you know, anything like that, so.
I, I just think it'd be a great asset for Westlake and, and Doom City as a whole.
I think it'd be useful.
To tie, to tie North Beach and Dartland's area together with how it used to be.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a, an asset.
And if you have access to the city's park that basically. Right, you got a big city parcel right in the middle of it, that, yeah, we could then call our open space and, yeah, it's full of birds and.
The people in Westlake do not have a view to do gas.
Okay. So, yeah, next step, we'll, we need to work together, somebody that.
That's five, ten people, you know, it's not, they're gonna be, overcome by the majority.
No, if it's like most of our public meetings, it'll be five people anyway.
But I mean, there's only five or ten people in Westlake that we impacted that don't like it. I mean, you're gonna have the fourteen hundred that are going for it, five that don't like it. But they're the ones that'll come right by their place.
Yeah, understood. So I, I would love to have a neighborhood meeting or something and go walk it, you know, just walk around before we cut anything, you know, and, and give the neighbors the opportunity to, to.
Well, before we do anything though, I still think, as, as a person that hunts, I've been very respectful of the private property and signs and I run into signs all the time on public ground and I call their BS on it and 'cause I usually research before I go somewhere, I know where it is and I see it all the time.
Right.
And I, I just, I don't like having, don't go here signs on public access. Where people can go, 'cause they're getting fewer and fewer places where public can go.
Yeah, could we, could we send them a letter and say, um, we would like to know where you would like to have the trail go if it's accommodating to you, otherwise we are coming in and we're gonna do.
Within reason. It was, one of them, they wanna build a house and the string from Woe Inc. to Silkus goes through their property as well, so they really have to constrain these properties. You know, it's wetlands in the front half, and a stream in the back half, and the trail goes through there, and the trail's not gonna be in the middle of the lake, obviously, this used to be walked through and around, so it's kinda at the high watermark, and, but yeah, that's something we gotta work out within reason, I mean, that, the two vacant ones would be the most impacted, if they wanna build a house, they, the house and the trail could be close proximity.
Well, it'd be helpful.
But they're vacant right now, they've been, they've been vacant forever.
How many of us have not been on the trail? I have not been on the trail.
I have, I've been pieces of it, and, like Duke said, the, the end over in North Beach is posted, or was posted improperly, so I turned around...
Well, if we could get a work meeting together, as a council, and...
The trail in Westlake area is pretty thick, it's...
I'll bring my...
Struggle, you have to have a shed...
I'll bring my tremor, and we'll whack a way through to some pioneering, but I think it'd be helpful to go see this trail.
Yes, I agree.
So, we could have a work meeting and do that.
Field trip?
Yeah.
Okay, invite the public?
And maybe that's the letter you sent us.
Well, yeah, just pick a date, say, "We're all gonna be there."
We're having a work meeting, we're gonna hike through there, and if you wanna join us, you're welcome to.
Right, okay.
You know.
Alright, well, we'll look on the calendar and set something up. It may be cool and wet. Alright, so you can do that, and then, a budget calendar approval, the, the dates that were discussed last meeting are in here. Still a few more.
The one date we didn't discuss was April 1st, and we're not gonna be here on April 1st, so I asked that we just take that one out, and we have two meetings, I think we can do two meetings.
So, you're saying we stay with April 15th, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, go from February 18th to April 15th?
Yep, yeah, April 15th is if we need it, so...
Right, and last year, we were one and done, so, everybody okay with that?
Yep.
You know it's doable, you can come prepared. Yeah, the print, slippery. Okay, would that change? We need to approve this, right, for the budget committee, so I need a motion to approve the revised schedule without the April 1st date.
So moved.
And, thank you, Rich. Do you write that down? All those are favorites?
Aye.
Alright, that's unanimous. Item 11, citizen input, anything not on the agenda, but you'd like to bring up, anyone?
Well, you say not on the agenda, but certainly you've already talked about Chet's Trail, and as people who grew up in Westlake can use it extensively, and our family did, it would be nice if we were allowed to talk about it. I, I do have a lot of information that would be helpful to you about the history of the trail, and, you know, it goes way back, it's not only was an old pioneer trail, it's used by Native Americans. I have grandparents, great-grandparents, people who used the trail, one of my grandfather's was a tractor, this was before my tractor, this was before, there were even automobiles here, that is how people would negotiate around the lake, and eventually get to Florence, even my youth, you grew up here, so you all said that, you said that, but for those of you who say, "We don't know what River Trail is," well, it's not only been allowed to kinda grow up, but there's a couple of big houses that they put a chain link fence where you cannot go through there. I tried to show my son, wanted to know where the trail was, he said, "Mom, I'd love to see this trail." I tried to show him, and it's blockaded by these people who put up a fence that isn't right the fork, the right way, couldn't there have been a little slot where people could at least go through? Or the beginning of the trail has to change, because now there's two big homes there at the beginning of the trail, 'cause that was a beautiful viewpoint, there's a big sand dune with a commanding view of the lake, it was a beautiful trail that followed the shore of the lake, and it was really lovely for people who lived back and forth, and, you know, I still walked it fairly recently, but my son was young at the time, and he wanted to see it as an adult, and I, I tried to show him, and just parts of it aren't even there, or there's a few private homes now, and I don't know what to say about that, that will be a problem, you know, but much of the trail is still there, it's certainly changed through the years, that it, it's a very special environment and habitat, I should know too, so that was its challenges. But I, I wrote, Rich wanted me to do some research on it, I did, and I actually wrote a whole article about it, that my son, when he got called away, maybe because my husband got a bad serious tick bite, so this almost deadly, I wasn't, he didn't get typed into you in time, but I do, I have done a lot of research in the system too, we both can , you know, tell you a lot about this history, and have fond memories of it, and yeah, it was a real treasure to the area.
Thank you. Anything else?
Well, I, you still need a lot of work, and the, the present description of what you wanna do to it, I don't think you're gonna really want to do that, it doesn't match the environment, this thing about solid road.
What's that? No, there's no road.
It, it says, the, the description has written when it was first...
That was for this opinion, that was not ever anything the council voted on.
Okay, so we need, that, we really need to be careful with that environment, more careful than perhaps the, the people in the past, 'cause it's, it's fragile. And the other thing is, it talks about it being an escape route, you sent that...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's really...
We're not proposing that.
That could never be in this, especially not...
We're proposing a soft trip.
Yeah, it gets small these certain times of the year, you know, globally, I mean, weather has changed, maybe we don't get the kind of moisture we used to, but there were parts of it that were underwater fast, you could go catch frogs, and, you know, study the water.
Well, it's definitely not a tsunami escape route.
Yeah.
Got it.
But it was a lovely trail.
That was a previous opinion from somebody that doesn't work here anymore, and it was not approved by...
Okay, yeah, alright, that's all I wanna say about that topic. Yeah. So, anyway, let's, let's be, let's do what we can to do this project with the environment in mind.
Sure, thank you, anyone else? Hey, none, item 12's executive session, we don't have any reason for that, item 13 is for the good of the order, let's start with Duke.
Uh-oh. This whole thing with the school got me, you know, I'm glad the charter group come in, and all that, but it, it just, it hit a nerve with me, and that is, I'm not a rich man at all, I have to really watch my pennies to, to make things work, and, and just, up to here, with councils and legislatures, when they don't balance their budget, they come to the people, and they hit us, and they hit us hard. The example's gonna be for me, our business in Florence, they hit us with a public safety fee, $5, they just voted on a couple nights ago, to kick it to 15, it's gonna go to 18. That never should be a fee, they, they made a whole new category and started a fee, that should have been a levy or bond, if they call it a public safety thing. So, it's just a money grab, and then you turn around with House Bill 3991, the, the tax on car registration, gas fee, all of that, they're not, they, they're running low on money for ODOT, so she turns around and hits us with this, it is huge. I have House Bill 31, I've read it, the money in there is real, and it is stupid, most, everything goes up by 100%, except for one thing, car registration, $77 to $216 per vehicle. It's just, they just do this, and then we have to do the work to get petitions, to get it on the ballot, all I'm saying, both of those should have been put to ballot first, ask the people, you know, and it does affect people in Dune City, so that's why I'm bringing it up now, there's, a lot of people have property, business that...
On my list too. The original bill that failed during the legislative session, I followed that closely, I spent millions and millions in gas tax, and, and when I looked at what they wanted the increase for, I, 'cause I get those League of Cities emails, they say, "The mayor, you need to support this," and I wrote, "I don't support it at all, here's why." There's a lot of programs in there that only go to big cities, and not $1 of any of that stuff's gonna come to Dune City, maybe 50 cents will, will make it to Florence, but none of it's gonna come, we're all gonna pay, and none of us are gonna get anything.
Governments don't need it, I'm saying the process, how they're going about it, they're just throwing it out, and say, "You're gonna pay this."
Right, well, then it turned into emergency session, that's what happened.
Yeah.
So, no, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's enough.
Alright, thanks. Susan?
Okay.
Okay, I had, well, Duke brought it up, there's a petition going around to put the gas tax on the ballot, so that you can vote for or vote against it, and conveniently, you can sign it at Darlington's or at Duke's shop amongst others, I think four locations in Florence, so, anyway, there's a relatively short window, that's all gotta go back to the state.
It's actually, it's gotta get back, but what I've been told, like, we have to write, send that in every night, they're gonna census on it, and that's gonna help, but they're doing way better than I, that the signatures are flooding in.
That's what I heard, yes.
Yeah, we're doing very...
But it closes in December, no matter what, because there's some deadlines that gotta be met to submit, so anyway, if you're...
We're looking real good.
Okay, end of December, so if you're interested, it's available.
Yeah.
The other item I had is, historically, and I think this is just policy, right, the comments are due by?
Usually 3:00 PM the day before I'm meeting.
But it, it was past city administrator policy, right, we didn't find this in a resolution or anything.
I haven't, it hasn't yet.
So, right now, it's, and it's historically been 3:00 PM today, and the problem is, if we get any letters, we didn't have anything today, but if we got anything that's specific to an item, Susan mentioned this on another item, none of us have any time to do any research or come prepared to talk about it, so I'd like to have comments, the council do at 3:00 PM the day before, we're now publishing every agenda with all the backup a week in advance, it's all out available on Wednesday last week, so the public's now got adequate time to read the agendas, look at the backups if they want to, and submit something, and that way, it would come to us, the staff in time, to distribute, you know, if it was something that needed to go to everybody, it could go emails, or you could be told there's another piece to pick up or whatever, but we quite often have things that we just end up with them sitting on the table, and we don't have any time to, to look at them and digest them, and, and, you know, formulate an opinion if there's an action item that I, so, if you guys are okay with that, we'll adjust. The other is, Lila comes in early and then leaves in the afternoon, so sometimes these are dropped off, and she's not even here, she comes back for the meetings, otherwise she's here in 11 hours, so...
So, Mayor, you're proposing 3:00 PM the day before?
Yes, so if it's Wednesday, it's 3:00 PM Tuesday, and if it's planning commission, it's...
So, are you, are you asking for someone to make a motion and have us vote on that?
No, I'm just telling you because it's been just a staff policy.
It's just a staff policy, okay, well, if we...
And it's been around a while, so...
Let's, let's, let's agree on policy and put it in the newsletter, not on the website.
Okay.
And that way, people will know.
So, everybody good with that?
Because honestly, they, the people who are so many things, want us to have it in time to be in Florence.
Exactly, we can use it to take action on it.
It makes, it makes perfect sense, so let's do it.
Okay, and that'll be my December newsletter topic.
Excellent.
Instead of holidays, I'll end with some dry government stuff.
Does anybody object with this?
Everybody good?
We're all good with it.
Okay, good, that'll be helpful.
What happens if somebody doesn't meet that deadline?
You can always comment, you know, if, you can come, I mean, we've had this, you've read your letter at the meeting, so, I just, if there's something that is, goes specifically with an action item, in theory, you would have it, you potentially have it in enough time, at least for Lila and I to do a little research and say, "Ah, this is covered by St. Blau, we need to be prepared for it." If it's just handed to us, it's like, and we have a comment, and you either have to continue an item so that we can, you know, do the research, or we just say, "Thanks for the comment," but, you know, the, the backup and the material you may have made your mind up on is already in your hands, so...
Well, it's the stuff we get that's here on the desk that we look at in the 15 minutes of our meeting.
Right, the 10 minutes of our meeting.
We, we just have to postpone to another meeting, 'cause we can't...
Right, if you wanna change your mind, right, you gotta continue it, so, it ends up at, and sometimes we're out of dates, right, there's things we have to respond to that, so, yeah, we'll put that in the newsletter, you know, as a reminder, and I don't even think a lot of people know, and so, we now have, and I can remind them, we've got agendas out a week in advance, they're all posted by Wednesday...
I think every other city does this already, they're already the day we want.
Yeah, that's what we talked about, there's, there's, yeah, it exists in most places, there's a, a little further back deadline, so that you can digest that, so, yeah, we'll put that in writing. Alright, Rich, you got anything?
I'm good.
Alright, Chris?
I don't.
I got two questions.
True.
Looking for information. So, we're seeing all these salmon get caught in Silkus, but not in Willink, okay?
Yeah.
So, how do the fish get from Silkus to Willink?
Down the stream.
And, and what are the impediments along the way?
They get beaver dams west of that one.
Okay, but, I mean, there's, there's beaver dams, and was there some conversation with property owners about clearing a way for the salmon to make it through, and that was a problem, or...
No, the state looks at it once in a while.
Is there, is there any process that we wanna be involved in? 'Cause I could tell you, um...
I don't think you're allowed to touch it.
I, I talked to ODFW a couple of years ago, and I said, "Well, how many fish are you stocking in Willink?" 'Cause I've never seen a fish jump in Willink, never seen it. And they said, "Well, we put 4,500 in there every year."
Oh.
Yeah, and they're not trophy size, but they're good size.
Yeah.
And I said, "Well, how much you put in Silkus?" "4,500." They get the fish the same day.
Oh, hey, seems like a year ago, it's like 25.
Well, I'm, I'm getting there.
Yeah, compared to Honeyland, there's no comparison.
4,500, 2,500, clay walks, it's 12,500, including trophies. And I asked him, "What, what's the reason to that?" He said, "Well, that lake is not open to the ocean, and so, the, because of the whole question about salmon habitat and that sort of thing, they said, "We, we agree that the fish we're putting in Willink are just being eaten by the invasive largemouth bass, they're just being eaten." And there are a few, we've heard salmon caught in Willink, but I don't know anybody that's ever caught on there, not, not recently. I know some old timers who paddle, can you keep them there? So, my question is...
No.
Does our city have a role to work with property owners to make sure that creek is malleable by salmon? I mean, it would seem like a good, worthy goal, salmon restoration is, you know, everybody's great, great, great plan these days, you know, opening up the road and that sort of thing, it would seem like it would be a...
Unless you need electricity.
Well, where, but where does the, where do the fish, where would the fish, would they have to actually get into Silkus Lake at first?
Yes.
And then I'm looking at this map here, and I'm saying, "Okay, well, there's this little tiny creek that has past Chet's Trail."
It's all on private property too.
Right, I understand, but was there some kind of conversation about opening this up?
No, not for this thing, no.
Answer the question.
Answer the question. The, the answer to the question is, the, what's the step program?
Yes.
Okay, you'll get a better answer from the step program, but I know, talking to the different step guys, they quit putting traps in, in Willink Lake about four to five years ago, because there was no fish returning, and it was because there's two beaver dams in the river blocking, the, in between Willink and Silkus, blocking the fish from being blocking the fish from being able to get in. Now, there are, or appears that there were last year, still salmon that were trying to get up Woe Hink Creek. So there's a group that come in and come around the corner and attempt to get in there. So I think they're spawning in the lower portion of the creek. This is my opinion on this portion of it, okay? But that is true. There are two dams. ODFW has been made aware of this four or five years ago. And the step program, they quit because ODFW wouldn't do anything about it.
Well.
So, but that would be a good avenue to get into, would be the step program and talk to them and find out why, when, how, is there any intent to return to that?
Yeah, I know there's step people who'll call. So would the city be interested in approaching ODFW and saying, we'd like to see some salmon habitat restored?
Well, I wouldn't suggest you have a marine biologist study the tributaries and what's going on in the estuary because based on the last two years, I've fished this thing since 2008. Populations of the spawn going up there is significantly down. I used to see like 30, 40 fish roll. I've seen two fish roll this year and I've been on that dock a lot.
Well, I beg to differ with you because what I've seen scanning on top of the dam when the dam gets opened is thousands of fish coming through.
Yeah.
So whether you're seeing them or not, I know what I've seen.
I'm not seeing what I've seen the last 10 years.
I know what I've seen at the dam, so.
But can you compare that to the last 10?
Hang on a minute.
Let's back to the question.
The question is, would we be interested?
So if you're asking me?
Yeah.
No, not until all the waterway stuff is done because it overlaps with Woe Hink Lake and the weir structure and the reservoir.
I get you.
And it's on private property in Dune City and then it goes into the county parcel adjacent to 101, crosses Clear Lake, which is a county road, into a county parcel. And then it turns back into Dune City. And I think the beaver dams are actually outside the city's limits. So I think we got our hands full with rapid permit. We already have, and it talks about the weir structure. So until we clear that hurdle, I don't want to, I'm, no.
I get you. I totally get you. Okay, my, my second point was, where are we with getting the fish screens issued resolved? Any further progress?
We're waiting to follow up with the state. They didn't send us the pictures from our field trip, but, you know, we had, we had a little bit of that conversation with ODFW and their view of the program. You know, they talked about screens they clean and streams that they're financially responsible for. And I think they realized they don't spend any time, effort or money here. And then they go, we'd love to come up with some program for long-term maintenance. And we're like, that's your program? That's not the city's program. So it's the same. We're trying to, we're trying not to beat that hive right now until we get past the permit stuff.
You're like, they don't want to bear it?
Yeah. And they started talking about, well, this doesn't, this isn't how we build them these days. And I'm like, I'm sure it's not, but the city didn't build it either. The conservation board built the structure. He goes, well, what's your goal? To do nothing? I go, that would be where I start, yeah, just leave it alone. It's been, it's been operating since 1939. Just leave it alone for now. And then there was only one guy there that knew any of the history. All the rest of them were about the same age as your history, your voice. This is their first time they've ever seen this stuff in real life, so, you know.
Okay, well, it'd be nice to.
It's a work in progress.
I know they're catching lots of salmon in Silkus. It'd be nice to see that happen up in Woe Hink.
Yeah.
Can they catch and keep them in Woe Hink?
I'm sorry?
Can you catch and keep salmon in Woe Hink?
Yes.
No.
You can? No, not at all?
Not, not to my knowledge, last I knew, you could not catch.
It's not even listed as one of the places you do.
Oh, it's not? Oh, that's the problem, okay.
So it really doesn't matter if it's.
So nobody's fishing for them. That's why you can't.
Well, nobody's fishing for anything up there, it seems like.
I see a few kids fishing off the dam. I never see anybody catch fish either.
Yeah.
Okay, no, good question.
Okay, it's all ahead.
Okay. Do you want to blow up Dune City for the salmon?
No, no, I just, I just think we ought to have as much salmon habitat as possible. It's good for our town.
Yeah. But right now, yeah, the real attraction is Silkus, where you can catch them and keep them. Post them on Darlington's website. That's where I keep up with the salmon. Lots of big pictures this year. Anyway, any other questions? All right, if nothing else, I need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you. All those are favorites?
All right.
Anybody want to say? All right, seeing you all.
Yeah.
This is embarrassing.
It is. We know it's bad. When I was in Nevada, they said, we were in the bottom.